So if we can reconvene the meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a confidential employee matter and to complete tenure candidate reviews. We could all start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll do introductions if everybody just wants to wave. From the board, we have Meredith Moriarty, Wendy Sampson, Chris Meyer, Christine Beck, Jonathan Fishbein, Willow Bear, and myself, Holly Dellenbaum. And from the administration tonight, we have Jody Monroe, Judy Kehoe, and Dave Hurst. First up on the agenda is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 20th, 2021 regular board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next up is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you.
Jody, you're muted.
Thank you, sorry. So I have a few things to bring up tonight. The first thing I wanted to have Mr. Hurst actually address, I know that was in the media, we've seen a few articles about students in cheating, particularly with online instruction. And I know our math supervisor had sent a letter out to parents alerting them. So I just thought Mr. Hurst would be able to address some of what maybe people are either reading in the paper or hearing on the news about about some of this. So Dave, if you want to address that first?
Sure, thanks. So, yes, so Bill Claremont, our math supervisor, sent home a letter that he crafted with his entire department to all of the families, night grades nine through 12, due to the fact that we're seeing an increase in students using technologies to essentially do their math homework and tests or quizzes. And, you know, this is not analogous to, you know, an elementary school when you pulled out your calculator to do your math problems, right? Basically, the one of the main app that a lot of students are using is called Photomath. And you can take an equation, take a picture of it, and it will show you step by step exactly how to solve the equation. The problem is that the techniques that this program uses sometimes are not always in sync with the student's level of math. So for instance, we had students in Algebra I doing work with parabolas that were sending, you know, work in that involved calculus. So while yes, the answer was correct and complete, it was sort of well above and beyond the scope of where that student was in her academic career. So it's pretty easy to spot these things because the solutions are either above sort of a student's ability level, or I should say their level of math content that they've gotten through, or they're using techniques that have never been covered in our school, right? Because there's obviously multiple ways to solve problems. But, you know, there's some sort of very non-traditional approaches that sometimes would be used in these apps. So it's fairly easy to spot when students are doing this. Or when six students have the same response, either they use the app or they all work together. So, you know, the purpose of the letter was not to accuse students of cheating or to sort of look to punish students. It really was more of an education for parents to just be aware that these things are out there. And if you can encourage your students when they're struggling to reach out for help from their teachers as opposed to relying upon these apps to do their homework and their tests and quizzes. Because while, you know, undetected, yeah, it might help your grade, but eventually this is going to catch up with you that if you're not learning the fundamentals, the foundations of these math courses, you know, eventually this is going to catch up. So it really was just meant to be sort of informative for parents that we are aware students are using these apps. It's quite obvious, actually. And that, you know, any proactive approaches parents can do at home to encourage students to seek help when needed as opposed to relying on these apps. You know, for sure, this is not an issue, you know, isolated to Bethlehem. Schools across the state, across the country, dealing with this very thing. And in fact, higher education is dealing with it as well. You know, colleges are really struggling as much as high schools with student and academic dishonesty. So, you know, again, it's not an isolated incident to us. So we thought we would just sort of get out ahead of it, try to inform parents of what's out there for students to use and just ask for help in ensuring that, you know, students are putting their best foot forward honestly. And if they're struggling, they should really be reaching out for help and not looking for sort of end-arrounds to get their work done.
Thanks, Dave. Does anyone have any questions about that? Before I move on, I've got a couple other topics in my report. Okay. So next, the next thing that's been in the news a lot is high-risk sports. Mr. Keys is joining us in case there's some questions that I'm not able to answer. I just put a couple slides together for you because I think the board needs to just know what the criteria is to move forward with any high-risk sports at this time. So Brittany, if you could go to the next slide. So if you recall, the governor, I guess it was a couple weeks or not quite, two weeks ago, basically said that high-risk sports could move forward. However, it needed the local Department of Health's approval in order to do so. So what the Department of Health did is they provided a guidance document to all the local school districts about what was going to be required in order for school districts to move forward safely with high-risk indoor sports. And so the minimum requirements that they set forth, and I believe this was given to all the counties across the state, and some of them have perhaps modified it, but this is what Albany County provided us. And that is that the Board of Ed, you know, must approve the district school's participation in each of the specific high-risk sports, which I want to be clear that we're currently not approved for high-risk sports under these minimum requirements. So this is letting everyone know what the requirements are until we get there. Each school superintendent or leader must oversee the creation of a sport-specific plan, which needs to be approved by the school's medical director, which is Dr. Gaffiri, who Len and I, Len shared the plan with me, and we did share them with Dr. Gaffiri. And he did get back to us that he does approve the plans for each of the sports. With a caveat, I just want to say that wrestling, even though that's considered a high-risk sport, we would not be offering wrestling. We had decided that a while ago, that we just didn't feel, nor did Dr. Gaffiri feel that that could be done in any safe manner at this time. Each parent or guardian has to sign an informed consent. Student athlete does have to be medically cleared by our healthcare provider. And we must agree to fully cooperate with any case investigations with the Department of Health. And we must establish a confidential phone number or email address. I would assume we would use, have both of those, probably email is probably more practical for most people to report any concerns. So those are the minimum requirements in order to move forward with any high-risk sports. Brittany, can you go to the next slide, please? And so this is where we're not currently able to. The seven-day rolling average in the county has to be below 4%. I think as of today, Albany County was at 5.3 or 5.4, something along those lines. And if any time the positivity goes above 4%, activities must go back to just the training and conditioning, which is currently allowed. The hospital capacity must be above 15%, which it currently is in Albany County. And the rate of hospital admissions must not be unacceptable in the absence of any emerging epidemiology data or anything that's identified by either Albany County, New York State, or the CDC. If something happens, I'm guessing this was included because of perhaps maybe the variants that are being recognized, that in those two instances, the last two, that the New York State Department of Health or Albany County could ask us to restrict these activities. Next slide, please. So this is obviously the challenge because you saw Rensselaer County is moving ahead. Schenectady County just met the metrics, and I believe Saratoga County is probably soon to follow. And so what the suburban council has done is they've met to develop a schedule where leagues would begin, you know, kind of with staggered times, knowing that Albany County is probably going to be the last county to be able to participate, looking at starting games a little bit later with the expectation that teams could play non-league games and that seasons cannot begin for any individual school district until all components of the guidance is met. So I think I saw Schenectady County is planning to begin around February 13th or somewhere along those lines. And keep in mind, the sports season is relatively short to begin with. It's February 1st through March 13th because Fall Two starts, I believe, March 8th. So whenever schools can participate, it might be very limited, but it would be something. I think, is that the last slide, Brittany? Yeah. So essentially, what our plan would be is to obviously follow the metrics. If the New York State Department of Health in Albany County has deemed 4% or below in those other requirements, to be able to offer it would be basketball. And, sorry, why am I blanking on? Oh, cheer, competitive cheer. Yeah, competitive cheer, basketball, and what's the other one?
Ice hockey.
Ice hockey. How could I forget ice hockey? So those are deemed a high-risk sport. But also, this guidance document also applies to the Fall Two high-risk sports. And I believe this will continue onto the Spring high-risk sports. So any high-risk sports for the rest of the year. Now, anytime the Department of Health could change this, but this is the current guidance that they provided schools for any high-risk sports through the end of the school year. So right now, the plan is we have been collecting information from student athletes who wish to participate because there is the medical clearance that's required. There's the parental consent that's required. And then moving forward, we would be just doing, having those teams do some conditioning in the gyms and whatever they can do with the guidance that's currently allowed under the no-contact requirements. And then when we meet the metrics, we would come back to the board with the appointments for the coaches, which would be getting those particular sports for, again, whatever the length of the season may be. You know, we really don't know. But that's kind of where we are in this process. So I figured Mr. Keys is here. If you have specific questions or if you have questions for me about the high-risk sports. The other thing I wanted to mention, I know there's been questions about Fall Two, and there are some high-risk sports in Fall Two that would need to still follow the same criteria. And we would look to, we are planning to offer Fall Two competition. I know that Mr. Keys has been speaking with the other athletic directors for schedules. We have agreements for turf, for soccer, for the Fall Two sports season. So we have places to practice, so we're prepared to move forward with that. Again, you know, just like everything with COVID, I think it's, any day these things could change. But that's where we are with sports. So I just want to pause if anyone does have questions about the actual plan or what the county has provided. So, Chris?
All right, a few questions. First of all, thanks for coming. In terms of this winter season, is there a date by which if we don't meet the metric, we're just going to say we're not going to do it? Or have we thought about that yet?
I mean, Len and I have talked about it. I mean, you have to have seven, is it seven practices, Len?
Six.
Six. You have to have six official practices before you can compete. So, I mean, and also the suburban council does have. Do you want to just explain the schedule that the suburban council kind of put together? Because there is kind of a staggered approach, knowing Albany County was probably going to be the latest group to be able to come on board.
Yeah, absolutely. As Jody mentioned, Rensselaer County, we have three league members, Troy, Columbia, April Park. They started today. Saratoga actually is below the threshold. They actually started today, Saratoga County schools as well. And I know Schenectady with Niskuna and Schenectady High School, one is starting Friday, I believe. That's Niski, and then Schenectady, like Jody said, is going to be the 13th. So right there, you have staggered pieces. The fortunate part is, within the suburban council, Albany County has the majority of members. There are six league members that are Albany County school districts. What schools are going to do in those three other counties that are able to move forward ahead of us is they're going to play a combination of non-league contests, as Jody mentioned, as well as they will play within their counties. Once we get below the threshold, and today we dropped another 2/10ths, so we're 5-1 today as we kind of creep down towards the 4-0. What we would do in Albany County is our first four or five game blocks, which are basically every one in the league is going to be playing on Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays. Albany County schools will be really focused on playing each other for those first handful of games for a multitude of reasons. One, to keep it within that smaller pod as the Department of Health, you know, recommended. And two, also, from just a competitive standpoint, we'll all be in the same boat, rather than playing schools that by that point may have four, five, six games, you know, 15 practices already. So from a safety, conditioning piece, as well as starting off in a really tight pod, that's how that would work from a schedule standpoint. We're hopeful that by, hopefully, second week of February, if things continue to fall, we'd knock out our six mandatory practices and then be able to start.
So what's the timeframe again for that season, for winter?
February 1st was the go-ahead to March 13th.
Right.
So it's pretty short, it's relatively short anyhow, so.
So if we get to like, let's say it doesn't drop to under four for another, let's say, two weeks, what Chris was saying, would we continue with the season if we're halfway through February?
I think we would try to do, even if, I mean, if the kids were able to get in, you know, four or five games, it's four or five games, it's something for them to look forward to. We are still doing, we're going to, we wanted to start at least letting the kids get into the gym, you know, shoot baskets, do some drills that are allowed under the current DOH guidance in CDC where it's non-contact. You know, they have their own spaces or socially distanced in doing those activities. So, but they can't really, they can't practice until you meet the metrics to be able to actually start your season. So you can't count that time as your mandatory practices for the season. It's just conditioning. So, you know, yeah, it could be, you know, four, five, six games. You know, who knows?
And then what's Fall Two season and then Spring? How are those dates working?
Len, what's the date? Is it March 8th for Fall Two till?
March 7th until April 25th is Fall Two, which would be our boys and girls volleyball, football, boys and girls soccer, field hockey. And then April 26th, only baseball starts because they have a minimum state requirement of 10 practices due to, you know, safe conditioning of arm health. And everyone else would then start on May 1st. And that would be boys and girls lacrosse, that would be our girls and boys outdoor track and field, boys tennis, softball, baseball.
So they're all shortened seasons?
Yes.
The end of June?
That would go to June 25th.
Okay.
Just to, just follow up. So in terms of, there's high risk and there's moderate risk and low risk. So, you know, for the next season, we're looking, we still have to wait on football and volleyball. We're still, the metrics aren't there yet. But in terms of field hockey and soccer, they're going to go.
Those are, right. And we are looking to, I know that we've spoken about this. We are looking to, is, you know, hopefully, we see conditions improving. We are looking for, to bring some modified activities on for kids because the middle school kids really have had nothing. So looking at that for maybe some Fall Two, depending, you know, that all depends on what other schools offer as well because you have to have other schools to compete against. But we'd like to be able to offer some varsity, some JV, and some modified as, you know, like I said, conditions improve so we can get kids some activities to look forward to.
What are the plans if one of the team members gets COVID, is positive? How is that going to be handled, unaddressed?
So if there's a member of the team who is COVID-positive, knowing what Albany County has done with classes, the entire team would be quarantined for probably the 10-day period. And if we had been competing against any other teams, they go, right now, they go back a 48-hour period. So if we had competed against another team, my guess is that team would also fall under quarantine, whether it be in our county or another county.
Thank you.
Yep. And, you know, I think that one thing the Albany County Department of Health has said is that they're saying that we can go ahead with these sports at the 4%, which they use the CDC guidance for. But I think people do need to understand there are risks involved. It's called high risk for a reason, because of the contact, because it's indoor. Even, you know, the outdoor sports are called high risk. And so I think that that's why they're requiring the medical clearance. There's some COVID questions related to that, the parental consent. There's COVID questions related to that. So, you know, I don't think we want to say it's totally safe. I think, you know, right now, nothing is. But if the State Department of Health and the local county Department of Health is saying that's their guidance to move forward with these sports, I think it also, those metrics they provided could be helpful in other activities we want to consider for students as we move forward as well. Any other questions related to sports while Len is with us?
Yes, sort of. I would just say that, like, these things, like, we're at a point now where, like, we need these and other activities for kids. Like, you know, in the beginning, in the fall, I think we were a different place where, you know, I was talking about emotional well-being and physical safety, and we were, I was prioritizing them. We are at a point now with these students where the emotional piece is now affecting their physical health and well-being, you know, and we see this in these kids. And so I think it would be great, perhaps the sports, to have more clubs, to have more activities, anything that we can do in a safe, reasonable way. You know, I'm not saying rip off the masks and, you know, go back to normal, but define ways that we can make this more interactive and more, I don't know, just to help kids with their mental well-being because many of them are not in the best place right now.
Yeah.
Do we have, one last, do we have plans for, like, transportation and, like, all the logistical pieces if we're able to go ahead?
Yeah, we've been in touch with transportation, and I think we know transportation. You know, we have a driver shortage, there's no question about that. So I know that, and we're not the only district to has that issue. So we just have to be flexible with when buses are available, when they can depart, trying to be cognizant of that. And, you know, again, every district is dealing with that challenge. So I think the athletic directors have been working together to try and minimize those issues.
Okay. And spectators would be limited?
No spectators, except for, I think every school would like to do, like, parents for a senior night. So one event. But we do have the ability to livestream, which is what we've been doing for many of our events already. So people would still be able to watch from home.
Well, I mean, I know the numbers in the county are heading in the right direction. I would just say maybe a message to all the athletes that are keeping their fingers crossed that not to attend any Super Bowl parties this weekend.
Yeah.
Right. I know, and there's been question, you know, February break, you know, we could see some spikes upward. And that's not, that's certainly not going to be helpful to get to that 4%.
And just to echo that, just that, you know, there are students that are doing sports outside of school. And if we want in-school sports to happen, we need to maintain that same level of safety and health prevention at those practices that you would at a school practice. Because, you know, we don't want disease, COVID being spread there and shut down a school season.
Right.
Hey Len, I have a quick question, and I think it'll show how dumb I am about sports, so I even hesitate to ask. But with the way the winter season and the Fall Two season are going to overlap, are there athletes that would typically play both and now are going to have to choose?
What we're going to do is, and I've already started to have these conversations with the coaches, you know, for the overlap. And what we will do is work it out. Athletes would be able to participate in both practices if they chose to. What, the wonderful piece is, since sports are also considered winter, all their practices are covered already. So if you are, let's say, a bowler, and now you want to go try out for, you know, basketball, those practices would cover. And it's the same thing once you're going from, say, basketball into a Fall Two, say, soccer. So that piece is already covered. But coaches know throughout the year, in all of my coaches' meetings, and we meet regularly, my coaching staff, even though we're not in a fall-up-and-running mode, patience and flexibility has been discussed all year. So whatever we can do to work together to make it, you know, the maximum amount of participation for the kids and as normal as possible is what everyone's really working to do.
All right. And then, Jody, I think we would just have to think about how we message to families about sports when we still can't have more than X amount of students in a room and we still can't open chorus. And, you know, there's a lot of it that just, it doesn't, it's not intuitive. So I have to think about how to reconcile that in some way when we're messaging to families.
And we are looking at, based on some of this recent guidance, we are looking to extend some of those opportunities that we have not been. So for example, in high school, they are doing some choir in the auditorium. We have, I met with Jason Dash, who and Dave Norman, and came up with a plan that we believe meets the guidelines. And we're trying that out and then hopefully extend it to the middle school. We're also looking to, tonight on the agenda are the musical appointments, to look at those. And then also looking at the secondary level, allowing kids to stay after school for some academic help and if some clubs want to meet after school. So we are looking to bring some of those activities to kids. So I think that will help. And I think some of this guidance that we did receive is perhaps helpful in help, to make, help us make some of those decisions that have been somewhat of a struggle.
I just wanted to ask one last thing. So there's no championship games, though, for anything, right? All those things have been canceled?
Sectionals in states, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So any other questions related to sports? I have one more topic. Okay. All right. Thanks, Len, for joining us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Len.
Bye-bye.
And then the last part of my superintendent's report. I know that in the fall, we had a request for, from some members of the community for the Hall of Fame Committee to consider removing Megyn Kelly from the Hall of Fame. And the Hall of Fame Committee met, and they met a couple times. They reviewed the requests that were submitted. They reviewed the information that was submitted. They reviewed the information that was submitted. Um, they then reached out to, um, Megyn Kelly specifically to ask her and follow up on some of the concerns that were raised. Um, and Megyn Kelly did respond to the Hall of Fame Committee with her responses, um, as to things that, you know, people indicating she said, uh, that she was racist, things such as that. And the committee met, um, followed up again and met on Jan, in January. And they reviewed all of the information, um, they shared, um, their thoughts about it. They ended up, um, agreeing to not remove her from the Hall of Fame Committee. And while they indicated they may not agree, agree with everything she says, um, they felt that, um, it's also not, um, it would be problematic to silence someone for having differing opinions. So they voted, and there was unanimous vote to keep her in the Hall of Fame. So that is, um, my, end of my superintendent's report for this evening.
So Holly, do you mind if I say something about that?
No, go ahead. I was just about to ask if anyone wanted to.
Um, yeah, I mean, I do. So, uh, Jody, I appreciate the work that the committee did in reviewing, um, the situation. I did look, again, last week at the, the policy that, that committee abides by, and I'm, I mean, I'm not entirely sure that there's any role for the board. In fact, I'm pretty sure there is no role for the board in terms of reviewing their decision. Um, and I'm always hesitant to sort of like butt our way into administrative processes. And I've actually been fairly critical of other board members, um, at times for wanting to kind of micromanage administrative decisions. But this one feels different to me. I mean, we heard from a number of parents and a, and a number of students about how uncomfortable the Wall of Fame makes them feel. Um, and I know at one point, there was a student petition with a lot of signatures to have her removed. And just students sharing their stories over the summer about how disrespected they, they felt and how devalued they felt, just it, it doesn't, you know, I, I understand kind of where the committee came out, I, I suppose. I don't know whether there are students on that committee. I don't know whether they talked to any of the students. But I guess I'm just sort of wondering, what do we do now? What, what is Dave Dommel? What do you sort of think about how we respond to the fact that we have students in that building that have a visceral and honest response to her being on the Wall of Fame, and it's not a political response? It's, you know, she's said some very hurtful things about race, and we have a anti-racist policy in the district that we worked hard to, to implement and roll out. And it just feels like it flies in the face of the work that we've done there. So I guess I just wanted to, to open a dialogue about it. I don't know what, what you guys think is, is the right response as administrators in that building, I guess is the question.
I, I happen to agree with, with what Willow said, um, and more, perhaps more to the point, when reading, um, what the committee, uh, discussion consisted of, one item I noted was, um, it was not sending a good message by removing her. And my question is, well, what's the message that's being sent by keeping her? Um, and Megyn Kelly's response to the committee was, I found, uh, more than disappointing. She said, um, and I quote, "Free speech is under assault. Divergent viewpoints are being disallowed." This has nothing to do with free speech. It has nothing to do with divergent viewpoints. It has to do with, do we honor someone who is, puts, um, posts and other words into the marketplace of ideas that are hurtful to our students? And what's the point of having a, um, this Hall of Fame? It's to acknowledge people that we want our students to look up to. While Megyn Kelly may have done some good things, like standing up to Roger Ailes, um, it's no different than, uh, Shockley, who, um, uh, forget his first name, but he invented the transistor. He was also, uh, a Nazi sympathizer. And he was ostracized from, uh, the scientific community. Now, I'm not saying we ostracize Megyn Kelly. I'm saying we don't glorify her by keeping her on the Wall of Fame. I don't know, I agree with what Willow said. The board does not have a, uh, anything to say about this. That's the way it's set up. Um, and as board member, as a board member, you know, I can respect that that's the way it is, and, and we have nothing to say about it. But as far as this idea that she raised in her defense, that this had to do with free speech, she can say whatever she wants to say, no matter how nice or vile it is. It's her, she, she can say, and I will defend her right to say anything she wants to say. But I cannot defend the ability of, or I cannot defend keeping her on the Hall of Fame when it is, when it is designed for people to look up to, for our students to look up to. Because this is not someone I would want my child to look up to.
The only thing I would say to that Jonathan and Willow is that the, the committee reached out to her, they asked her specific questions, and there were seven people similar to, like, our board setup. And they had in-depth discussion, and they're probably closer to the information than we are. We, we have what was said in the public, obviously. But we don't have every detail of everything that they, they spoke to her about. But there, it is somewhat political. I'm not talking about some of her statements, but there are kids who do like her. And I'm not saying, I don't, I discredit anybody who doesn't like her or they feel offended. But there's the other spectrum. There are people who have different views or think differently of her. So how do you weigh that? I, I, all I'm gonna say is I feel comfortable with who's on the teacher committee or the committee who reviewed it with their decision.
Isn't the school a place that's supposed to be safe for all children? And if we have children coming to, uh, us and, and others in the administration saying that they feel devalued, uh, by this, isn't this something that should have a, should be looked at a little differently? Um, I, I understand that there are different viewpoints. I mean, the country is very divided on all kinds of different viewpoints. But still, um, if schools are going to be a safe refuge for our children while they learn, um, I think that we have an obligation to, to make sure that images, um, of people and honoring people who devalue our students are not allowed.
Well, you feel that way about other members on the, the, the Wall of Fame that shouldn't be up there. I mean, are we, now, do we go through every single one of them to see, you know, what?
There is, there, there is one other that I have an objection to because I know what this individual did, and unfortunately, I don't have the proof. Because if I did, I would take them before the, uh, the group that would deal with such, uh, behavior. Uh, I don't have the proof, but I have enough, um, I have enough to convince me. So I really, I haven't raised it in the same way that Megyn Kelly's been raised, and I won't, because there's no proof. Here, there's plenty. And, you know, the, the committee made their decision, and we're gonna have to live by it. But I think the community should know that, you know, there are board members who feel that school should be a safe place for our student, and that this creates a problem.
I just, I just want to say a few things too, because like, I've been thinking about this since, you know, this all started months ago, and it's, it's weighed a lot on me. And, you know, I agree with Jonathan and Willow in looking at the, um, the, the committee and the way it's set up, it, the board really doesn't, you know, have a, a vote or a say in this. The committee made their recommendation, and then we, we go with it. Uh, but i- in looking at it, and I, I've thought about this a ton. And I, I have to be honest with you, the, the one person I'm really the most disappointed in is myself. You know, I, I listen to Jonathan, and I listen to Willow, and, you know, and they're, they're great advocates, you know? And, and I, I would put it this way, I was thinking of the best way to put it, and it's just that it's, it's not that I've said horrible things about race, it's just horrible that I haven't said anything about race. You know, a- and, you know, I think that I, like many other people, have lived this life where, you know, I think if I just, if I'm just nice, if I'm just a nice person, you know, there'll be change. And, you know, my niceness has affected 0.0% of racial change and equity in, in America. And disappointed in myself, a- and, because I'm vocal on other issues. You know, I stand up for other things. You know, why, why, why not this? You know, and I just, I, I almost feel the need to apologize just because, you know, I, I am a, an elected official, you know, and I should say, speak up, and, and I haven't before, and, and that's just not acceptable. It's something that I know that I need to work on and improve. The, the one other thing that I wanted to say, because there is a social studies teacher in me. So I, I, I was looking at all the arguments, and, you know, one of the things that we keep hearing in America today is this idea, this, this fear of, you know, socialism and changing the, 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 the structure of the family and all the just ruining of the American culture when we bring up these, these groups, these topics. And as a history teacher, I want people to realize, this is, this is not a new idea that's been brought up when change is requested. You know, I did some research on these things, you know? And there was a group of people that were, that were called socialists, anarchists, uh, and a threat to ruin the world. They were women, women's suffrage movement, okay? Uh, so this isn't, not, not a new argument. You know, Martin Luther King Jr., you know? J. Edgar Hoover spent years searching, or searching for, as, for communist contacts. So we keep hearing this argument, and it's just an argument, as a social studies teacher, I, I struggle with greatly. Because anytime a group comes up and asks for equality or freedom, we hear it again, immigrants. If you're an Irish immigrant, you know, you were told you were, you, you're, you're coming here was gonna ruin American culture. LGBTQ ruining American culture. Uh, women entering the workplace is gonna upset the family culture. So it's just, it's just this frustration that I have, and when I read these arguments as a social studies teacher, it's like, well, we've been, we've been playing the same tune for, for centuries now. You know, a new group comes up and wants equality, ooh, they're socialists. You know, or, ooh, they're, they're a danger to the, the cultural value. And it's just, something as a teacher, and it just gets me, because it's not a new argument at all.
Jody, do you have any, um, thoughts in response to, I mean, Willow's, um, comment or question about, you know, from the administration perspective, um, on this?
Well, I think that-
To be fair, sorry, that's us too. I didn't mean to put it on you, Jody. I, that's, that's all of us. That's, I was just opening it up for, like, what are we gonna do next?
Well, I think that we, we are, though, you know, to, we are moving forward with this. You know, the board established the anti-racism policy. Um, we've been doing a lot with diversity in, uh, within our curriculum, which actually I'll speak to tonight in the state of the schools. Um, I think you've seen some of the work that the buildings have been doing, um, you know, it's part of our goals for this year, not only for, um, you know, updating our curriculum, but also, um, doing staff development, professional development in these areas. And I think that's the, that's the bigger picture piece, right? That, um, it's not just about Megyn Kelly and how people feel about her. It's this whole issue of, um, race and diversity and equity that we've been talking about now for a couple of years. And I think we've been making, um, a lot of headway in this. And I think, um, the high school in particular, with the, um, English and Social Studies Department, who has really taken the lead on this and done a lot, um, I think we're, um, in our work with, um, Harriet in the parent workshops that we're offering, student workshops. So I think that it's really part of a bigger picture that, um, is being addressed, um, not just at the high school, but really across the district. And so I think that we just continue to move forward in, um, making headway in, in this particular area is the way we address those issues.
Meredith or Wendy, did you have any thoughts?
Yes, actually, I did. Do you want to go first, Meredith?
I have to go first.
Um, I, I don't see why we can't draft a, a statement as a board that we may disagree with the committee's decision and just leave it at that. I mean, I don't, I want the chance to go on record as saying that I believe it is hurtful to students who are walking under that. And I'm gonna, as a mom and as a, an English teacher, there's an English teacher in me here, um, we, we don't need to overturn committee's decision, because that, it was their job, we gave that to them to do. But we don't have to agree with it, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Meredith?
Um, thank you to Willow and Jonathan especially for, um, voicing a lot of my opinions. Um, I think it is something that we should think about, whether or not this entire Hall of Fame is bringing any value at this point to, um, to the school district. I don't know, um, it's taken up a tremendous amount of administrative time. Um, and I, I just don't, right now, I'm not seeing the value in it. What is it, what is it teaching our, our students, um, that some, some people who went to the same school as them accomplish things? Um, I think that can be done in, in different ways. Um, and I just, I don't want anyone in our school to feel uncomfortable by something that we have put up in our school. And, and if it's not bringing value, and it is hurting children, I, I don't see the point of it at this point.
And just circle back just on what you said, Meredith. You know, I don't agree with it being up. I, I, I just feel that the committee, we let them make the decision, and they did the investigative work, and they came to that conclusion. But I do agree with you, I'm not in favor of a Hall of Fame. I think that people contribute to society in many, many ways. And to highlight certain individuals, um, for the different ways that they contribute doesn't necessarily add any value. And like you said, it, it created a lot of angst. And, you know, of course, I want every student to feel safe at the high school. Nobody should have to walk by her picture and feel uncomfortable. And it shouldn't also be something that's gonna cause problems between students who may or may not agree with that opinion. So if it's just causing turbulence, then that's really the question for the board or the administrators, is do we want to continue this practice? And I would, I feel that we probably shouldn't, but that's-
Another point about that, you know, I've noticed the middle school is doing like a monthly, um, I forget what they call it, Hero, or something like that, where they talk about four different, um, people who've contributed, and kids vote on them, and that is a way for kids to learn about, um, historical or contemporary figures that maybe they didn't have an opportunity to learn about before. And a way that we're getting, uh, more diverse, um, important figures into the discussion. So maybe that's something that we could be doing at the high school, instead of just recognizing people who went to our school who also did interesting things. Why, why not, um, talk about a more diverse group of people and just bring that knowledge to our students and have a Hall of Fame, not necessarily linked to our school, but people who have done interesting things that you may not have heard about or learned about, and a way to educate our students about, um, people who have contributed in ways that aren't necessarily, that they hadn't learned about before. I'm just throwing that idea out there.
Meredith, I'm glad you brought that up. I think it has been a successful, um, program at the middle school. And I think one of the things that, um, has been successful about it is that it has, um,
um has been successful about it is that it has um included a lot of student voices with respect to both selecting the individuals that um they're voting on each month um and actually doing the voting on them. Um, and then um having information up about them in the uh, in the hallways. Um, you know, I, I would like to thank the committee for their efforts um in meeting um additional times to take a look at this issue and making the effort to reach out to her and review her responses. Um, you know, I, I do uh want to respect the process, um even though um I agree with, I think, what um pretty much everybody said, which is that they don't have to, don't necessarily enjoy her membership in the uh, in the Hall of Fame. Um, but with that said, and what uh Meredith and Christine were um were referring to, I'm wondering, Jody, whether uh you can, I'm not sure if it would be with Dave Domell, if you have a conversation um and about the value of the Hall of Fame um in general at this point. Um, whether it's something that we should have, whether we need to have it, um and then be able to, you know, report back to the board on the outcome of that conversation, I think that would be valuable.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
The other suggestion too I wanted to throw out there, I know we have our homecoming game and we usually do Hall of Fame inductees, but another thing that we could look at is celebrating students that are, are doing different types of work that contribute at the time they're in high school and celebrating them while they're in high school. You know, somebody who goes above and beyond and and the students know. So maybe that's something that we turn our focus on, is our own, you know, the students that are currently there and the work that they're doing, because we have a lot of intelligent, bright uh students who volunteer and put a lot of good in the world, so what a, a good time to celebrate them as well.
Sure, yeah, I can, I can circle back around with the high school administration and the, and the committee themselves to talk about that.
Didn't we have a, a young lady who had a, an experiment fly on the shuttle at one point? A while back, or was a candidate for a flight?
Yeah, Rihanna Balzum.
Right, right, so so somebody like that who goes above and beyond would be, you know, an ideal candidate.
Anybody have anything else on this that they want to add?
That does conclude the superintendent's report. Sorry.
That might be a record for a superintendent's report.
I think it is, yeah.
Uh, next on our agenda is our um board report, um and um I think it will be significantly shorter. Um, I did want to uh congratulate um Amy Ruse and the cast of Life After. Um, I watched the uh, the film of the show and I can only imagine that um it must have taken Amy and her team a lot of time to put that together. Um, and I just wanted to congratulate everyone involved with that. I also wanted to say thank you to everybody who was um involved with putting together the parent meetings um that were held in the past um couple weeks. I'm not going to try to list everybody because I know I will forget someone. Um, but uh, you know, I, I listened into both of the meetings and I thought they provided a lot of valuable information um for the parents, and I've heard um from uh people in the community that they felt like they had a lot of questions answered and we're really happy to have the chance to um kind of check in and hear what was happening and be able to make their voices heard at this mid-year point. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to share?
I also got to see the uh, to see Life After, Amy did a great job, the students were really excellent, it was a, it was a lot of fun. Um, a little of it went by uh quickly and I periodically would miss something, so I ended up watching it twice and it was just enjoyable the second time.
Yeah, I, I love the creative thinking about picking a show that could be done in that format and be just as good as if we were watching it in the theater, so I, I know that those kids were so excited to be able to do something. Um, so I really appreciated that we thought outside the box.
And we got a front row seat, which, you know, and ticket price was right too.
How do you have to get dressed?
Um, and I don't think we had any, um, have had any committee meetings since our last um meeting, but I just want to double check in case I'm missing something. Okay, anybody have anything else? Uh, then I will turn to the next item on our agenda, which is our presentation this evening, um our State of the Schools report.
Okay, thank you, I think Brittany's going to pull up the presentation. And we're going to tag team on this. Okay, so the State of the Schools 2021, um, you can go to the next slide. So um, it's hard to believe that um it's been over a year, it's been almost a year since uh we started hearing about COVID. So this year's State of the Schools um is somewhat of a condensed version. Um, it doesn't include uh much of the strategic plan since we put that on pause. Um, it does, uh, the school climate survey uh typically would be included, so we had to uh make some changes there. Um, and we, we will be survey, surveying middle and high school students though this month, we met today, and we're going to be doing that after the February break to get some feedback from students on um academic support and mental health support. Next slide, please. So um, this past year, um, it's been interesting, we've been dealing with COVID enrollment. We do have our annual goals and action plans that um I'll talk about, and part of tonight will be to highlight um our budget planning, which Judy Kehoe will be presenting more in the following, um, the next meeting, actually, where we get our budget process underway. So our reopening plan, um, I think you all recall, we spent months um putting this together, including all of these components. And um I think you all are well aware that it's met, has changed many times um since we released this back in August. As part of our reopening plan, health and safety have been our real top priority. We talked a lot about these uh last summer when we had our parent meetings, um and as we've gone through this school year. So I wanted to talk a little bit about um our cases that we've had. This is a look at where reported COVID cases have been. Uh, both students and staff, you can see, um have tested positive. The information has been from uh case investigations and contact tracing does indicate that most infections are taking place outside of school. Um, we get asked this question um a lot, and do we know if there's been any transmission in schools? And while we um have no indication that there's been transmission of COVID in schools, I think we also need to be cognizant that um we are large buildings, we are large um places where there's a lot of people. So to say with one hundred percent certainty that there's been no transmission, I think um would probably not be accurate. But we do believe that our schools are safe, everyone is wearing masks, we're six feet apart, we're following all the social distancing protocols. And uh, you know, even though it seems um like we do a lot of reporting, which we do, overall, this is a relatively small number of positive cases since September eighth. Our first case was reported um actually on September twenty seventh, and you can see the large spikes similar to what we've experienced in the community um happened around Thanksgiving and the December break, and hopefully we're on the um, you know, positive trend of that downward spiral that we've seen for the last week or week and a half. We did begin onsite COVID testing, um we began preparing for this in December. Um, if you recall, the governor at the time was designating areas of zones, cluster zones, orange and yellow. So there's currently no zones, they've kind of gone away. Um, but we did get tests to um as a result of that, and so we're beginning to test um our staff as well as our students. And our student testing will begin um next week. Next slide. So um, we did start our staff testing and we had a less than one percent positive. We've had many questions about staff getting vaccines as well recently. And while we can't mandate vaccinations of our staff, we do currently have more than fifty percent who have had one or more, or one or both shots at this point, or have secured appointments. So we're fortunate as to our location and the availability of vaccinations that our staff are able to get. So the goal of our reopening plan and testing um and mitigation efforts are to keep our schools open and to maximize our in-person instruction. So we've had our K six students in daily, um aside from a few times, seven twelve are on the A B hybrid schedule, and we have been able to maintain daily instructions for our skills, intensive skills, B rise in our E N L students. So one of the things, uh, when we talk about the hybrid model, um, it's not quite that, it's not that, um, it's a little bit tough to figure out, so we have a little video to highlight what does the hybrid model of instruction look like? So um Brittany, if you could play that? There's no sound.
This is your chance, what's the word? See, this is a non, this is a non phonetic word, this is why it's killing me a little bit. So I see three hands, that, four hands, oh, four, you're back in, oh, uh-huh, you have your chance, mute it up, bro, mute it up. Tess, what's that say? Right, Dylan? Tamara, right, all right, Tamara, go ahead and take it. Chase, mute your cam, mute your microphone, please, Cameron, this is your chance, what's the word?
Tamara?
Tamara.
So um, that's what a classroom in the hybrid model looks like, um and you'll see um all of our six twelve teachers using that model of instruction. Um, for our K five students, however, uh, we do not have that model. We um did not believe that that was an effective way for our K five students to learn. So we did create the K five Virtual Learning Academy, and K five families have the ability to choose the V L A as an option on a quarterly basis. Uh, and we do manage enrollment between the V L A and the elementary classrooms. So uh that gets a little tricky when people are transitioning, but the V L A has been uh a highly effective model, and we've had some great feedback from families um who have been enrolled in that model uh for much of the year this year. Thinking about our enrollment, um, we are tracking this, this is a big part of our planning from year to year. And you can see that um based on the Capital District Region Planning Commission, we are still expecting to see slight declines um out through the year twenty twenty five, twenty six. And again, you can see this not for K five, six, eight, and nine, twelve. Again, if you look at the bottom totals, you can see the projections uh right now for the year about forty two hundred, um going down to a little over four thousand in the out years of twenty twenty five. So to just provide an update on students who are participating currently in our in-person learning, and this is as of January twenty sixth, you can see at the K five level, uh, we're still similar to where we were at the beginning of the year, um anywhere from um, you know, eighty eight percent uh down to about eighty two percent in our sixth through eight grade levels. Uh, we're rated around between seventy six and through eighty two percent, um as of, again, January twenty six. And our nine through twelve is currently where we've seen the biggest dip. Um, so in grades, uh, at the start of the year, we were closer to eighty five to ninety percent. And if you look currently, we've had a lot of students, excuse me, transition to virtual only, to grades eleven and twelve in the fiftieth percent. So um, we've been talking about this, and one of the things we're going to be asking families to do, um, if you recall at the beginning of the year, we asked people to commit to the hybrid model, the A B model or virtual model. And during the holidays, um, things got a little crazy, and we had a lot of COVID cases and a lot of quarantining. So we had many families and students who went to just virtual, particularly in the middle and high school. Many of the middle school students have returned. We still have a lot of high school students who are remaining virtual, quite honestly, because they don't want to have to quarantine, because we've had many students and um staff who have had to quarantine three and four times. So what we are planning to do is um, beginning after the February break, we are asking families in, uh particularly in the high school and middle school, if you're going to be virtual, you need to remain virtual until the um fourth quarter. Because we also have many students and many families who have asked for their children to come in daily. And it, with this kind of um drop in our numbers for the hybrid model, it only makes sense to allow students who want to be there daily to come in if we have the capacity to do so. So we'll be communicating that out um in the coming week and asking people to commit. Because at the high school particularly, we are seeing many students who show up certain days, and you know, if the weather's not good, uh, they want to stay in their PJs and they don't come to school, and um that's really not fair to the students who want to be there every day. Um, and we've also had a lot of questions about um, how can we get more students in the building? And I just want to go back to this diagram uh which we showed as part of our reopening plan. And currently, the guidance is that students have to be six feet apart in classrooms. And so when we talk about can't we just bring all the students back, uh, the reason we can't is we, we just don't have the physical space with the social distancing requirements um of six feet. Um, if those social distancing requirements lessen, uh where we could go to four or five feet, we could absolutely get all of our students back, but with six feet social distancing in the size of our classrooms, in our secondary schools, we just don't have the capacity to do that at this time. So um, the other piece that uh we spent a lot of time on is how do we respond to COVID cases? And we work directly with Albany County Department of Health. Um, either they contact us or often families will contact us, our school nurses, and we then work with Albany County to identify um any students and staff who were potentially exposed at school to COVID. Um, this then results in the process of identifying contacts that we then have to provide to Albany County Department of Health um in quarantine notifications to any families or staff members who have to quarantine as a result of that exposure. Um, from there, we have to report any case details to the school community, which are pretty much our daily notifications. And then we also have to report that to the New York State Dashboard. And I think one thing that is important that people don't always understand is that the Department of Health is the eight, lead agency when it comes to contact tracing and quarantining. School districts don't get to decide who is able, who has to quarantine. Uh, we have to take the lead of the Albany County Department of Health. And this flow chart just, um, you know, I'm not going to go over this specifically, but you can see that there are a lot of people involved in positive COVID cases that have to be reported. And this flow chart really gives you an idea of the number of people who um potentially have to be um either contacted or involved in that process. So our strategic plan, we put that on pause, if you recall. We use the metrics from 19 and 20. However, it's because of COVID, there were a lot of things that we felt just made sense to put on pause. So we did see some progress when we first put that in place. In year one, 43% of our metrics we met and we helped establish the baseline data. It does help us identify areas of focus and we set our annual goals to meet in areas of academics, character, community, and wellness. And we did modify some of our metrics from the beginning of the plan. However, because of COVID, 61% of our year two metrics couldn't be measured and 92% of them were impacted in some way by COVID, which is why we felt it was important to kind of put that on pause. And once we're past COVID, we will do a reset of our strategic plan. Last year, we were rated the number one school districts in the capital region and out of 430 upstate districts, we were ranked number six again in academics. And this is from the Buffalo Business First. We've remained number six for the last several years. So related to our goals this year, we are still continuing some of them, although we did modify them. So we are continuing our program reviews. We are assessing our learning gaps. We are integrating materials, diversity within our curriculum and providing training, developing a comprehensive curriculum that addresses gender identity, relationships, consent, and sexual harassment, and integrating technology, which has just become a huge component of our instruction because of COVID. The Lab School is doing a program review this year. This is a program that is an elective program and there's an application period currently that's open through Friday. Anyone who wants to learn more about the Lab School should visit the high school website and applications are being accepted for students in grades eight through 11 currently. Also, we just announced that we are offering the Seal of Biliteracy. This is available to current seniors and it will also be available in years to come. This recognizes high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in one or more languages. One of the areas that I know is a concern is learning gaps. We've had that question a lot from parents during our parent meetings. And this kind of highlights all of the work that we've done and continue to do to make sure that students are still achieving and what areas do we need to focus on. Using things such as the iReady data, the Reflex Math Program in elementary, we've talked a lot about prioritizing our curriculum, knowing that there was going to be time lost, not only since last March, but this year as well, in making sure that we're focusing on the priority standards and making sure that we're staying on top of students using progress monitoring and making sure our grading is reflective of what the outcomes are we want the students to learn. This just highlights some of the diversity work we've done within our curriculum. We had a board presentation on this earlier in the fall. Andy Baker and Nick Petracconi were here to talk about some of the different things we've done within the curriculum. You can see we've added a lot of diversity within our literature for ELA, Social Studies and Science, as well as the secondary level where we're looking at different titles. We're looking at different resources that we can bring in to really present more diverse perspectives within our curriculum. In instructional technology, Ray Nardelli talked about this a little bit in his last presentation about all of the instructional apps that teachers are using, the professional development. And as you saw from that earlier video on the hybrid model, there is a lot of technology that teachers had to quickly learn and be able to implement. And now it's something you see every day in all of our classrooms. We do have tech coaches. The board had added those a couple of years ago and they have been a huge, those individuals have really helped us to move forward with our technology integration. Teachers are using Seesaw, Google Classroom for instruction. You can see the interactions between the elementary, middle school, and high school, tracking, they're keeping track of how often they're being used for consulting. And we've done a lot of technology, both during the summer as well as during the school year, to help teachers be able to use technology effectively within their classrooms. Our next goal of character, we've had 78 of our elementary teachers take part in cultural proficiency trainers. And this year, we've had 53 high school students be recipients of Be the Change Awards. Also, we've done professional development. You've heard a little bit about this in our prior presentations for staff on equity and cultural responsiveness, as well as professional developments to our staff related to sexual harassment and gender identity in relationships. In cultural proficiency, we've had special area teachers that in three through five teachers during conference day take part in that training. Our social studies and ELA departments are working with our consultant, Harriet Grasbender, on curriculum changes. And for students, we're doing some of the same, working with them on how to identify implicit bias. There's open dialogue between high school students and our recent alumni who were vocal in the spring about some of their own experiences and also monthly celebrations in education related to cultural proficiency. This is an image of some of what's been happening in our schools. And we have a little video clip. I think it's by Nia. Do you see that? Yeah, can you play that, Brittany?
Today marks the first day of Black History Month, which recognizes the people, the culture, and the important events of the African diaspora. Black History Month was founded by African-American historian and author Carter G. Woodson and has been recognized nationally since 1976. This February, please join BCHS in our celebration of Black History, Culture, and Innovations. Here are a few things we're excited to share with you. Wonderful guest speakers, soul food in the cafeteria, movies celebrating Black joy during lunch, inspiring artwork from Guerrilla Art Club, an amazing Spotify playlist featuring Black artists made by Alana, a unity day at the end of the month, when we will wear orange to celebrate kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And lastly, an outstanding Black History Month Google site where you can find all of the aforementioned information and more. Now, why do we celebrate Black History Month? I will leave you with this poem. Black History Month by Nikki Giovanni. If Black History Month is not viable, then wind does not carry the seeds and drop them on fertile ground. Rain does not dampen the land and encourage the seeds to root. Sun does not warm the earth and kiss the seedlings and tell them plain, you're as good as anybody else. You've got a place here too.
And that was Nia Santalise, who did that announcement on Monday to kick off Black History Month at the high school. So I thought that was worth sharing. And related to sexual harassment, our goal is, I think we've said this will not be tolerated. We know we have a lot of work to do in the areas and these are just a few examples of how we are working to educate students and staff at every level. And again, Kristen Connor and Fred Powers had shared more information on this at a prior board presentation. Also, one of our goals related to community, strengthening family, school, and community partnerships. We have adapted as needed to assist families and students no matter where learning takes place. Our food service and transportation team have played a huge role in this effort. You can see, this is an image of our food service, who are providing meals and students are having those at home. Our backpack program, which has continued to be a huge success, and an image of our caring and sharing program over the holidays, where we raised over $12,000 in gift cards and food donations to give to our families in the community. And wellness, this year, I've had 15 Q and A session for parents and staff to help address their questions. And our guidance department, if you haven't checked it out, has created a virtual calming space for students and staff and there are 18 national parks, if you'd like to go explore those. Also, we've been implementing the K8 Social Emotional Learning Curriculum to provide increased mental health supports, providing staff with resources and staff development. We've implemented a tiered system of supports to help monitor attendance and we are still continuing to focus on green initiatives. In regards to some of the social emotional concerns, I know we've talked about this a lot. You can see this highlights it all the levels, some of the things that we've been doing, working with the coordinated care teams at the elementary schools and the zones of regulations. If you have elementary students, you've probably heard about those. In the middle school, the counselors are doing curriculum, pushing into the classrooms. And again, the coordinated care teams there are providing direct support to individuals and families, as well as at the high school, where we're also focusing on lessons in ninth and 10th grade, Excel classes. The counseling center have created monthly newsletters to address current mental health concerns, which also are provided to staff to help support students who may be struggling and the calming space, which I just mentioned. And doesn't this look great this time of year, our gardens? So they are still, we are still continuing with our green efforts. I know that Mark Warford is still pushing them and hopefully soon we'll see the gardens getting planted for the coming year, something to look forward to. The Capital Project, we are finishing this up. And you can see, we've done a lot of work and hopefully some of these spaces, which have been underused at this point, will start getting some more use. There were 111 projects district wide. This was approved back in 2016. It seems like that was so long ago. And the high school auditorium has just been completed and that was the cornerstone of the project. We have a short video to highlight some of the images. So with our Capital Project, you know, we had decided several years ago that smaller, more regular projects make sense. And so since the spring, last spring, we have been working with our architects to identify what potentially we might be considering for our next Capital Project, which you will hear more about. So in the next steps, we would be identifying what are the major projects and the Board of Education would determine those priority projects with review of the facilities plan. And we would need to then set timeline for considerations of construction and community readiness. So more to come on that. And finally, the budget, which I know Judy Kehoe is very much looking forward to for her next presentation. So the state aid outlook is made up of a lot of things. And we've heard a little bit about what the state is considering, although there's a lot of unknowns at this time. It does look that state aid would be significantly lower in 2021, 22, due to some reductions in building aid and transportation aid. And there's some shuffling of different aids from federal to state, which we will talk more about as we get into the budget project. In 2020, 21, aid payments will be made in full, which is good news because we had heard that there would be a reduction of up to 20%. So it looks like that will not happen. So the current budget for this year is just over $103 million. The property tax levy is $68 million and we had planned to use the fund balance of about $3 million. So this slide is pretty self-explanatory, balancing the budget. Our expenses have to equal our revenue and that is our goal every year when we develop the budget. You can see this is a summary of our budget expenses. Our largest expenses are obviously in our staffing with our instructional staff and our employee benefits and then other areas such as student transportation, debt service, and general support. And our revenues have to equal that. So you can see our two main sources of revenue are state aid and local property taxes. And this just gives you a highlight of the budget history. Our 10-year average budget increase is 1.61%. In our tax levy history, over the last 10 years, the average budget increase has been 2.1%. been two point one percent. So our budget development timeline um will begin at our next meeting, where Judy Kehoe will give a more detailed overview of the budget and our budget planning. We'll also have our technology budget and transportation budget overview at that time as well. On March third, we'll do our operations and maintenance and our athletics presentation. On March seventeenth, we'll present our instructional program and special education program, and with the goal um by April fourteenth of adopting the budget. Uh, there's still a little bit unknown about uh the budget vote and how that will all work this year. If you remember, last year was a little bit crazy, uh, but we'll um we'll um keep everyone posted as we learn more about that. And just one other thing to mention, we do have several um of our leadership positions retiring this year. Cindy Jurowich, our Transportation Director, just retired, and we have hired Karim Johnson. Uh, Greg Knowlty will be retiring also um in June, and we have two elementary principals retiring this year, so um there's some changes in our leadership team that we are planning for as well. And on that note, I'll close. That's an overview of the state of the schools in this, um, I would say unprecedented year. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Jody.
Speaking.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I, speaking of unprecedented, I was wondering what our um cost was on PPE, cleaning supplies, and associated COVID measures, and where that was on the bar graph?
Yeah, we just put those together um not long ago. I don't recall the amount for the PPE, because we had to total it PPE and the staffing. Judy, do you recall what that amount was?
I am preparing that information that we will include in the budget overview. Um, it was just, we're gathering those totals. We have them, and we'll present out.
And obviously, all the costs associated with testing would go, I assume, would go into that category as well.
Mm-hmm, correct. Although the testing, just um, the actual tests that we have were provided to us, we didn't have to pay for those. Jonathan, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, do we have any idea um about the with regard to the budget vote, if people are going to have to um use petitions again or not, and where that is? I mean, I know last year we had an a uh quite a bit of a turnout for obvious reasons, which means that petitions would have to carry a lot more signatures than they have for the past quite number of years.
Right, the signature piece is up, I know, if that's what's required. We haven't heard anything. The only thing we've heard um related to the budget vote is that Albany County has told us they do not have the voting machines to provide to us. So we're working on an alternative plan for that, but we haven't heard anything about the petitions, if signatures are going to be required. Um, I would expect we would be hearing, I'm hoping relatively soon, about that process, because we've already had people asking about it.
I find it odd that Albany County doesn't have the machines to give us, given the fact we use what, one, two machines uh to actually process? I mean, what are they doing with them?
Um, they said that they can't give them to us because of the timing of the other elections, although I know that Bosse's has been working on this, because other counties are providing those machines to their school districts, so um, yeah, I I don't really have a good answer, except what we've been told.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just, well, sort of, like, you, it's not directly related, but you did bring up like the quarantine piece in your state of the schools, and just the the fact that, you know, counties, different counties are doing it differently, and the way that Albany County is doing it. And I understand there is the issue of safety, but it's just the the number of people that have to quarantine for each case is taking such a toll on all the schools, and you know, we have people that are now in their fourth quarantine. I don't know, I've heard of a fifth yet, but I know there's at least people in their their fourth quarantine. And is the county looking at what other counties are doing, you know, Saratoga or Warren, in terms of, or even out like in Rochester, I know they're doing it differently? Is there a potential for reviewing that? So, you know, if you are, like, if you're right next to the kid and you eat lunch with them, yeah, we should look at the quarantine, but if you're thirty feet on the other side of the room, do you really need to quarantine?
So, I'll, Jody, you can respond. I've been on calls with every county and the State Department of Health, and Albany County is doing it the way that the State Department of Health has indicated it should be done, um, so, for whatever that's worth.
Oh, and I believe you, it's just, there's, you know, you hear stories from every each other county, and there's different things being done in in different schools, and it just, it affects us so much, because, you know, we've had situations now where one one person has taken out a hundred and forty, and so it just, it doesn't, it makes school very difficult to maintain uh being open if we've got to keep doing that.
Yeah, and it's true, Chris. I mean, every county does seem to following different protocols, and um I know that we've had a lot of discussions, the Albany County schools, about the quarantining, because um it has forced us to have to shut down and go remote simply because of staffing. And um, you know, those numbers I shared with the high school students, um, staying virtual, uh, that percentage dropped since the beginning of the year. That is mostly a result of kids not wanting to have to quarantine, because we've had many kids quarantining three, four times um at this point, and and they're frustrated by it, staff are frustrated by it. Um, so I do believe that that um is what's causing many of our high school students to not want to return to in-person learning.
And DOH isn't even following up with some of the kids. I mean, if we're quarantining kids from a class just because somebody came down with COVID, DOH isn't even following up with them. So just, it's such a tremendous impact on learning when there's no no studies that are showing that they're getting it while they're in school. And it doesn't make sense. I understand what Willow's saying is we're following it the way that, you know, it was it was meant to to be laid out, but all these other districts are doing it, and is the rate higher in these these areas, you know, Saratoga, Warren, is it higher than where we are and what we're doing?
Yeah, I I'm hope, I'm hoping that um, you know, if if the rates continue to drop and there's less community spread, that um that's an area that will be reconsidered, because I do think it is um hurting um our ability to have kids, keep kids in person, I should say.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question about um the money we expend on PPE and a lot of other COVID-related expenses. Is that not reimbursable by the feds through the CARES Act? We should be getting that money back, so that's not something we have to worry about, it's expenditures into the future, because it's all going to be, like, it's reimbursed, right?
Well, uh, maybe, maybe not.
Tell me how it's supposed to be done. Really.
Judy, do you want to talk about the CARES money and also the FEMA?
Well, FEMA is the main thing. We've submitted the FEMA application for the expenses that they would allow. We haven't heard anything on the application. I will let you know as soon as we have some money in hand or some kind of a determination on that, but um to date, nothing. So um we're going to include that in the information that we present to the board, um, what we've spent, what we expect to have reimbursed, and then uh what areas we've saved on, um, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're able to live within the budget that was adopted, so we'll give you that overview at the next presentation.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Jody.
Sure.
For sharing all that with us. I particularly liked the video of the uh construction update and got getting a chance to see the uh the auditorium in particular. It looks great. I can't wait to actually see it.
Yes, we're excited to hopefully use it soon.
Yeah. Uh, next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment, and we actually did not have any um comments submitted uh in advance of the meeting this evening. Uh, next, um, item six, action items. Uh, A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through ten.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Action, the Board of Education approve the following action items one and two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item seven, future meetings and events. Um, on Monday, February twenty-second, at six o'clock, we have a policy committee meeting. Um, on Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, um, that is our next uh regularly scheduled board meeting. Um, it's a um, I think a week later than it normally would be because of the February break. Um, that's at seven o'clock, anticipating an executive session starting at six. Um, and then the meeting following that is on Wednesday, March third, uh, at seven, anticipating executive sessions starting at six. Uh, seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Have a good night.
Everybody. Good night.
Thank you.